Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Question and staff. Tonight we have the public hearing for the proposed 2022 village annual program. If you would, you can see the statement of notice, please.
Um, the purpose of the hearing is the public review and comment regarding as opposed 2022 village Grafton annual program budget and related levy.
Thank you. But it has proceeded to the point of the public hearing. This was an opportunity for the public to weigh in on. There were also a couple of items that were directed to Jesse and staff to come back to the board for a couple of suggestions. So Jesse, you want to get us started?
Certainly, a very brief overview of the budget, where it stands today. We've got a $8.36 million of total tax levy programmed, which is up 3.4% over the previous year. The village is looking to utilize the net new construction and unused levy carried forward. Tax levy adjustments allowed under state law. The levy would result in a village tax rate of $5.89 for $1,000 value, or about up four cents or 0.79% from the previous year. It is important to note that this is pending as our final assessment ratio has not yet been received from the state of Wisconsin. However, we do not see any drastic change to that tax rate that is calculated. No debt is proposed impacting tax levy allocations. However, utility-related borrowing is programmed in the 2022 budget. $772,000 of fund balance is programmed for use within the general fund. Net operating incomes are realized by both sewer and water utilities. ARPA funds are you are programmed for projects to offset reliance on tax levy. A balanced budget that complies with the tax levy limits and expenditure restraint program guidelines is before the village board and has been from day one as part of the deliberations. And as the village president mentioned, there were two directives coming out of the committee of the whole budget workshop. One was to provide funding scenarios for a full-time fire medic position within the Grafton Fire Department, and then provide funding scenarios for an additional $10,000 allocation into the park and open space special revenue fund. That is the overview that said. Following up on those directives, I do have a recommendation coming out of my office with regards to the directives that were given. The recommended funding alternative for the board to consider along with others listed, but the recommended funding alternative would be to reduce the annual tax levy allocation of the Fire Department Capital Equipment Fund from $156,092 down to $100,000 even. Reallocate that $56,000 difference of tax levy into the Fire Department Special Revenue Fund to offset the cost of a full-time fire medic. It's important to note that under this scenario, the current five-year capital, the current adopted five-year capital improvement plan is accounted for. The option that was presented would achieve both the new Public Works crew person within the general fund as well as the fire medic position within the special revenue fund for the Fire Department, assuming a March 1 start date for that fire medic. No additional tax levy or fund use balance, whether in the Fire Department Fund or in the general fund, would be required under this scenario for 2022. I did speak with the town chairman as there is a funding cost share part of the service agreement with the town of Grafton. They are agreeable to the redistribution of a portion of that annual tax levy allocation from the Fire Department Capital Equipment into the operations in order to fund that fire medic position. That being said, the secondary directive, I do not, uh, I am not recommending any funding, any additional funding into the park and open space fund at this time as the five-year capital improvement plan is fully funded with the current $35,000 annual allocation. The additional funds, there is no specific plan for the use of those funds either. Therefore, again, I do not have a recommendation on that $10,000 additional allocation into that particular park and open space fund. That is my overview of the budget at this point.
Thank you. This is the public hearing, so with that being said, we have a sign up sheet. I do have the sign up sheet in front of me. There is no signatures on it, so I will open this up to the public. Any comments, questions, clarification on the 2022 annual budget? And it goes for anybody that may be online also. I'll open it up to the village board, then for a comments, questions on either the budget as presented and or the directives that were requested of the administrator. Yes.
Jesse, any sort of clarification? So the capital equipment fund is used strictly for equipment?
Correct, that is a special fund specifically set up for Fire Department capital equipment, correct?
And I don't know if this is for you or maybe Chief Rice. Is big purchases something that you're seeing this year, next year? Where are you?
The next few years, there's annual refurbishments, two of those, and SCBA replacements. I believe that's in 2000, both in 2000. Those are fairly large purchases together. After that, there's a low, and then after a while, we get back on the trend with end homes and the potential ladder truck.
So Chief, if you had to purchase ladder truck, for example, what would something like that?
Today's dollars probably around anywhere between 1.3 and 1.5.
And I think it's important to note that the adopted capital improvement plan for the, or capital equipment fund for the five-year outlook for the Fire Department does remain fully funded under that scenario, and those are all equipment purchases identified by the chief and presented to the township as well. The best planning we can do, so all funds, the fund balance of any unexpended funds do remain within that Fire Department Capital Equipment Fund. So that's important to note, too.
So that fund is something that you just want to keep building consistently, correct?
Correct.
In like a very steady manner?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, from what I see is what's going on with the budget process. I think this is for funding the Fire Department. This is, you know, as spare of a situation as we can, being able to pull those funds out of actually a fire fund. I, I, I do have a concern when we kind of look at other departments that have requests that go through the normal process, which is go through the budget process, and, you know, those, those positions or that equipment or those things are denied during that process. I understand that. I think that this is, this is fair. I think of, I, I think in the case of Public Works, Public Works came to, it came to, Public Works came to the Public Works Committee with a very, very good plan of how you were going to fund this, how you were going to take care of it this year, what you were going to do in the next year. And I, I think that that was part of a good plan. I'm concerned here with, with the request for the fire, for the fire medic. I'm, I'm for that if we can fund it, but I'm, I'm kind of concerned with this, given what the real facts are for the need. And I'm happy to discuss that, but I think if, if we're all in agreement that we can work through funding this through the equipment fund, I'm fine with it. But I, I would be happy to lay out some facts that I found here if we need to go there.
Any comments?
Yes, I'm concerned with the police department evidence room project. First, I heard about it, with the logic. Never heard about the request or that we discussed it in public safety. And that's $55,000. Or something that, in my opinion, is really not needed at this point. That money could easily be put aside for the Fire Department.
Chief?
Yeah, so the, the evidence room has been discussed prior to the budget process. It was discussed in public safety committee meetings prior to that. It was also discussed during the walkthroughs that the respective board members did when we went through the police deployment and I showed them the evidence room. One of the things about the evidence room, having that shelving or the organization system, it will help us with our recognition and our accreditation. I can't get that property room accredited currently as it sits because it is not, does not meet the standards of the requirements for accreditation.
Thanks, thank you. Lisa, you?
Um, so you did mention that in passing a couple of times, Chief, the evidence room. Can you tell us how many other departments in the area are accredited with their evidence rooms?
That, I don't have that information.
So I did look up the accreditation process, and it's a process that it goes to a point person who takes an exam, who is able to pass a test, which, by the way, costs $6,000. And that is also in the budget, I saw. So I guess my concern about seeing it here, and Jesse, you did give that to us as an option. And I didn't look back in public safety, and that comes out of the capital there. I had to dig a little to find it, but I did find it. So I, I feel like I would like to know more about that. I would let to know if there's other communities that are accredited. I don't believe there are. I know that's kind of a feather in somebody's tap to have that accreditation, but for $55,000 to maybe upgrade the evidence room, seems like a lot at this point. You know, there were some other things that we did with the police department. I got them up to speed on some other things. You have five people that are highly specialized in their new jobs, and that's one of them. So I guess I would like to hear more about the evidence room and the process, and how the accreditation will happen, if that's something that's really necessary. If that's something that is also, if there's an overlap by the chief or maybe a sergeant or, or another officer. So at this point, that's something that I would like on the table to be able to provide funding. I, I had some other questions, Jesse, for you, if I could go down your list here on, on the sheets that you gave us.
Certainly.
So is the, on the first page, you listed the fiscal impact to the budget for the DPW crew person.
Correct.
Is that 79,096? Is that the actual number and all the results?
That is, that is when we took into account the known costs of our health insurance, the WS contributions. We also verified that starting salary instead of taking, just from memory, from an email correspondence, we verified exactly what specific that starting salary would be. So that is the accurate cost for a full year.
So originally, that was split up between the two departments. And the total for those two departments was 82,196. So how, so that's a difference of about, what, $3,000? So currently in the budget, it's 82,196 complete. So I would assume this would have to be refilled here to be seen.
I believe that 82,196 was just the change, and the description was an error. Should have been tied to that one position, should have been a more broken out explanation.
I just added those two different areas.
Correct, and like I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I don't believe that those were the, the full numbers. There was a change, but I believe that description is incorrect.
So then in the new budget, it would reflect the total of 79,096? Okay. So the other thing I wanted to comment on, you say the fund balance usage within the general fund is additional fund balance usage is discouraged.
Yes.
And obviously, we don't want to go through a 25%, but we're at 32% right now. So we still have a little wiggle room.
Technically, yes, we do. However, we're at the tipping point here. We're, right now, we program fund balance, and we're able to disperse that through one-off or unexpected expenses throughout the general fund. If we start using, programming more fund balance, that starts getting into day-to-day operations, or worse yet, staffing. That will eat up the fund balance very quickly, and we would be, by rough calcs, out of fund balance within four years. So we'd actually are trying to dial back the use of fund balance, which is why the, the initial proposal for that crew person was to be partially offset by that levy carried forward adjustment, and then the remainder of that levy carried forward adjustment applied to take the edge off of programming fund balance. We do not want to program any more fund balance within the general fund.
So by suggesting that the wages for the firefighter paramedic come out of the fund balance of the Fire Department?
Nope, it would come out of the tax levy.
Oh, okay.
Allocation for the capital equipment.
For the capital, right. And so that capital balance is going to go down every year because a portion of that's going to go towards the personnel.
Correct, that is the scenario proposed.
So we would not ever, I don't think, recommend that to Public Works. We would never say to Public Works, you're going to have to, you know, dial down your capital purchases. I know it's a different kind of function.
We actually do.
But it's, in my mind, it's the same thing. We're asking, you know, one department to maybe go a little low on equipment if they need it.
Difference is, Fire Department has an allocation that, again, to, to skip the million, $1.3 million for a truck. So we do allocate some years more than what they actually need to spend to build up to that. We're in the capital equipment fund for all the other departments. We skate by. We know that we can only do so much, so we always, during the budget cycle, have to eliminate some kind of projects. Where we don't have that advantage of having that sustainable built-up fund balance.
Public Works has had equipment taken out of. Right, I understand that, right, right, I understand that. But to, but to count on an employee to year after year come out of that fund, I don't think is acceptable, and no other department would, would want to be with that either. So again, that is not my choice for where the funds should come from. I, I would like more information about the evidence room. I would like to learn more about that. I would like to learn more about other communities that might have that. That's a huge chunk of money, and that could go for this. I mean, I know that that's a desire, and that might be something really nice to have, to be certified, but the need that we have for the Fire Department is more prevalent, in my opinion.
A couple of concerns with reallocating those tax levy dollars out of the general capital project plan being the evidence room. Number one, that reduces the allocation into the general capital plan by $55,000 year over year. That's a one-off project. Whereas reallocating money out of the Fire Department Equipment Fund, that is a year-over-year tax levy allocation. This is a one-off project, so we wouldn't have that ongoing sustainability as compared to just simply reducing or reallocating tax levy from the equipment fund over to the operating fund within the Fire Department. That would be a concern there. To the point of when it was discussed, when it wasn't discussed, it was a part of the adopted capital improvement plan. It was presented as part of that. As far as accredited departments, I, when I was there, and I believe they have kept it up, the village of Brown Deer is an accredited police department. And from what I recall in helping them with that process, it is very stringent. Literally, you have to have your floors waxed and paint touched up. They will grade to that extent. So there are a lot of things that go into it, and I understand the importance, especially considering the, at times, noxious chemicals that they need to store in the evidence room from time to time as they seize illegal drugs and whatnot. That is, as I recall, Chief, and please correct me if I'm wrong, a huge chunk of this, not just simply reorganization and racking, but also proper ventilation with, within the evidence room. So it's also a safety issue.
My point, which was, this was an option that you gave us.
It is.
It was an option that you gave us.
It is.
So there are a lot of other options. Again, when I compare personally what's needed and what's wanted and what we need in the big picture of the village, and what can the taxpayer benefit from, I come back to the firefighter paramedic. And again, we wouldn't ask another department year after year to take money off another fund. With Public Works, we are saying that part of the money for this new person is because we've had some salt savings. So that is not sustainable either. So that's something that we're, we have some money for this year, for next year, that we've saved. But that is not something that we can count on year after year either. So there are similar situations with Public Works and, and, you know, with the funding for this.
And there's additional levy with the new homes coming online, which helps offset that initial savings of, uh, salts savings. So it is not entirely based upon salt. So that's where the sustainability of the crew person comes in.
And talking about new taxes, taxes coming into the village. That is something that, as a special revenue fund, the Fire Department should have an adjustment every year. They should get more money every year from the increased taxes. That's something that we did last year, but for a long time, we did not do that. And that's the same predicament we're in for park and open space. I understand that you, you know, that there's no planning in that department for projects, but there are, I think, a lot of projects that could come out of that. There are a lot of things that they could use the extra $10,000 for. I have some thoughts on that, but I will let other people speak. But I am for your asking, and my opinion is to take it out of the evidence room and allocate that towards the Fire Department with a start date similar to DPW in May.
Just some feedback. I did hear back from Lester. So we look kind of here, blindsided, right? Because they did their project, they did all their budgeting before this particular topic came up. We are under, it's a contractual agreement that we have to notify them of their.
It's part of our service agreement, our proposed budget by October 1.
So the only way that they will support this particular, this particular addition would be under the scenario that Jesse has, has proposed. And they also are requesting, and I think this is not too dissimilar to what I just heard, is that we do a full review with the town as far as how do we manage fire services and how should they be allocated to the town and the village? But that was the feedback that I had gotten that from the towns, that they would only support, again, because they would be on the hook for operations of cost for this new person also. So they have to figure out where it goes in their budget, too. So anyways, that was, that was the feedback that I got from the town.
So I, I do have the contract in front of me with the town, and this contract is brand new, 2019. I believe it's a five-year contract. And plain as day on page three, it says, "Under annual contribution for operating purposes, beginning with the year 2016, the village agrees to establish annually a Fire Department operating budget for the succeeding calendar year. The village shall provide an initial budget estimate to the town no later than October 10 each year for the succeeding calendar year." On the next page, it talks about the fact that it's an express understanding of both parties that the final and sole authority for the determination as to the amount of the net outflow of the Fire Department budget and its component parts shall be vested with the village board. Now, the town asks us for help, and we contract with them, and this is an updated contract. And they know that if we are asking for more personnel, they do have to pay a percent of that. And that's what they agreed to.
I'm just giving you the feedback that was presented to me, and I'm sharing it with the board, is that we do have partnerships with the town, and I could do with, you know, many different entities in the community, and this is one of those things that we kind of work together and collaborate on. Andy, you have a?
Yeah, I, you know, I have a, I really have a problem here because, you know, we keep, we, we kind of talked about how the police department came to the public safety committee and kind of heard about the evidence room. Because I reviewed the minutes, it's pretty clear in the minutes that we did discuss that. Yet, I don't see anything in the minutes from the budget over this fire medic. Again, I'm not against the fire medic, but my challenge in all of this is, is I say, we need this fire medic for the village. I don't know if we do. I mean, obviously, we have about 2,000 calls picked up here for this month, for this year. Down about, what appears to be about 2,020 or so for what we currently have. So the numbers that came from the ambulance service were 2,000. By now, by 365 days, it's about 5.47 ambulance calls a day. Um, you know, and I, I guess the concern I have is that, why wasn't this discussed at public safety? Why, why didn't we have this discussion and the blessing of public safety for a firefighter? Why did this come at the last minute? I, I just, I'm concerned about that. Yet, the other point, I'm not done yet. At the other point, I'm seeing is that we have, the police department who asked for something, didn't get it, or in, in the case of the FTEs, didn't get it. Yet, we have, this wasn't presented until the budget came forward. I'm just concerned about that. I think it's, you know, the, the department had the best to come up with what they, what they need, and we don't have that come up.
Okay, and let's move on to the side of the table. Tom, Nick, for your thoughts?
Well, in gen, in general, I, I'm accepting, I think, of the recommendations of our village administrator in terms of Public Works and the added crew person. It's definitely needed. We had a very good, detailed explanation of a position that was going to be important, 365 set all year long, not just for filling a plow during the winter months. So it's needed. And in terms of the additional $10,000 for parks and, parks and rec open space, initially, I was certainly in favor of that. I, I, I was on Park and Rec Committee at one time, and we talked about it two, three years ago already, that that should be increased. Whether it can handle a $10,000 bump in a budget year, that's concerning to me. I think it may be a fund that eventually needs to be adjusted annually by some percentage so that we can keep up with the growth of the community. But at this point in time, I would concur with the recommendation that we don't do anything to increase it this year. First, until we get a new Parks Director on board, I think, to take a look at it. And then also, can't see putting money into it as long as we have it for the recommendation that it's funded for at least the next five years in terms of the capital, capital planning. It's something that we can certainly adjust in the next year, two or three from now if we have a list of projects, actual projects that need to be funded or should be funded and everyone's in favor of. But for now, to get this budget done, I think the recommendations that we have before us are good for me.
I still have my opinions on the, the room, evidence room, and I do feel we, we need a, your PMG doesn't have to start March 1st as a set, I think May 1st would be fine. Park and Rec, I could see maybe 5,000 instead of 10, that's compromised.
The, um, the project of the evidence room, whether it happens or not, doesn't have to be decided in the budget, right? All, all the budget does is it allows for the option of further discussion at public safety and, and board, whether or not it should be seen based on what you're asking for. Would it be bid on that?
It would need to be bid on, yeah. So, I mean, yeah. To your point, President Brunkwald, a project the size of the evidence room would have to be bid, and it would have, that, those bids would have to be reviewed and awarded. So to your point, there is absolutely more room for discussion on that project. Yep.
And President Brunkwald, I like that you have said that it should be discussed at public safety. So, Nick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. More in depth, so that we have a feel for it.
I mean, I, I, yeah, there's no, the budget doesn't rubber stamp anything. It just allows for the various programs to be funded in a planned way. And we have some recommendations on our point.
Um, I'd like to just talk briefly on the Park and Rec end of it. The $10,000 that is requested, I think is needed. Jesse, you and I went this summer and looked at a vacant.
Jesse, you and I went this summer and looked at a, a vacant baseball field. Or discussed with you uh, east of the current field in Centennial.
Yes, we had uh, planned to walk through.
You and I referred, let's wait.
Yes, sir.
Till former director Phelan came back from her.
Yes, sir.
Maternity leave.
Yep.
And then we'll, we'll go up there with her and discuss that and that. So that's out there for the new director. What can be done with that? It's a waste of space right now, filled with weeds and it's basically used pretty much for. A practice facility, really. So I think while we don't have this ironclad list, you are aware of some of these things.
I'm aware of some of the things, absolutely, but.
We gotta get an ironclad list for it.
Yes, sir. Uh, I think that would be the, the most prudent way to utilize taxpayer dollars. Have it planned out as to how you'd like to address these projects, assign a priority to them, whi- which is um, what, what I was hoping to try to explain. In my comments to the Park and Rec Committee, um, just as it sits right now and it's pointed out here. That, that capital plan is funded, those capital projects are funded i- i- under the current allocation process. That said, um, I think it is really important for the. Park and incoming Park and Rec Director and, and that department to work together and get that strategic plan. Um, just so we don't eh, throw money at, at, at problems. Um, there are definitely needs out there, I, I'm not disputing that whatsoever, but I think it behooves us to have an organized. Um, and prioritized approach to addressing these.
Yes, so in addition to that, what you're, what you're aware of. Uh, in, in the spring, shortly after uh, former director Phelan started. I, I even mentioned this to you, um, we took her on a little bit of a field trip, showing her. Different parks and the needs in these parks and what happened, and one of them was the Park on First Avenue. The basketball court is, needs some love.
Okay.
It's. Uh, gotta have some money put into it.
Okay.
So. Just today, I thought I'm, I'm gonna drive around a little bit more. And I went to a park that I played in as a kid, Third Avenue Park. They have a basketball court there next to the cemetery, to the Southside Cemetery. And uh. There's asphalt coming through, I mean, grass coming through the asphalt on the basketball court, it, it looks horrible. It needs a lot of attention. So that ten thousand dollars, I don't think is a stretch for us to put in there. Were you sick, gonna say something, Jeff?
No, I, I, you said, this is the first avenue?
I went to First Avenue, that court needs some work, but. The one on Third is horrible. There's grass coming through the asphalt, if you get a chance, take a ride up there.
Sure. Candy.
And, and so when, when we ask for more money for Park and Rec, I think it's legit. I, I, I did find that. A lot of your alternate, alternate, alternative suggestions on here. They always ended with, don't forget, Park and Rec's got a five-year C I P of thirty-five K. It was like. Your way of saying, Parker, I'm not getting money.
No, sir, it's simply a reminder that that particular fund receives an annual allocation that's standardized, that's all that was.
On every alternative, okay.
And also remember that the parks of, Park and Rec have access to the Park and Reparational Facilities Fund. Which is impact fees, so we had a, a full list, as Jesse was saying, we could identify. Can that be paid through by impact fees or can it be paid by other fees? A tax levy, so having a full, but better sending of that would assist in identifying. Wha- what revenue source or what fund should pay for that project.
And I would just add, I'm all in favor of additional crew person for Amber and DPW. And I'm all in favor of this additional firefighter permanent. Uh, for Bill. And I think there's some alternatives here where we can make those both work and. Get some sort of funding for Park and Rec, if it's not ten grand, something. Because as I mentioned to you, Jesse, at the last Park and Rec Board meeting, when that Park and Rec money comes in, it seems to stay the same. Year after year after year with that thirty grand. Then we finally got a bump to thirty-five and I asked you, now, how long is it gonna stay at thirty-five? And, right, you didn't say.
Right.
You said until we make a change.
Correct.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yep.
So I was part of that right along and I know that wasn't called an official meeting, but that was sort of our wish list for the parks. We all know about Veterans Memorial Park that needs to be taken care of, the pavilion, the kitchen remodel, the bathrooms are terrible. We need new picnic tables there, we need recycle bins at all of the parks, at least the major ones, there's no sign at Cheyenne. There's a problem with the goose.
Yes, sir, unfortunately.
Which is ongoing, I understand that. Residents have at, called and asked about a possibility of a basketball hoop at Centennial Park. The pool needs ongoing, ongoing updates, a splash pad would be great, maybe a smaller. Type of slide for younger children, so I think that was kind of our wish list. And maybe they didn't go to the proper channels, but we did voice that on that right along. For Paul, I was looking over to the evidence room question, you have noted page two twenty-five for the fifty-five thousand. Can you show me where that is, please, because I, I'm not finding it just yet. I too was trying to understand the money, how it would be used.
I think it's on the orange page.
Uh, yeah, I utilized my budget book for uh, page numbers and two twenty-five would be. I'm looking to it right now, would be the capital, capital improvement funds, uh, capital projects, it would actually be the. Uh, listing of. Projects. Identified in the equipment fund, so we page two twenty-eight. Uh, specifically page two twenty-nine, the following page uh, breaks it out. Yep. Under account five two one zero 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 point eight one five. It would be third from the bottom on that list, so about middle of the page. Evidence room storage of fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars. My apologies, that was a misprint on my part.
Yep, and we can move it to capital projects.
So. I think the evidence room up for your project is something that we should look at, I'm just not. In agreeance that it should be this year, I certainly think it should be something in the near future. I would like to see the ten thousand dollars for Park and Rec and. I feel that Chief Rice has asked over and over and over again for additional help for years and years and years. I'm not comfortable with taking it out of the capital equipment fund, because I feel if we do that once, hearing these dollars that we. We can use that for, for other equipment. Large dollar amounts, and if we start doing that, I just feel it might be something that we're gonna do in the future. So I am not in agreement, and I'm agreeing to do that out of the capital.
Just a quick clarification, the. The evidence room is a, is a one-year project, right? And the capital, the investment out of the capital, basically. Still funds the capital in progress for this five-year C I P for the firefighter.
Correct.
So I think the only thing I would just caution is if we, and I'm not saying we, we should or should not do the evidence room. I'm just saying that if you, if you allocate those dollars to. From, from police to the funding of this person, it's a one-time fix. If you look at the capital, if you look at the operating, the capital from the Parks Department, you've got something that's sustained it for five years. But what it does is it gives the board the opportunity to review that program funding. Next year, the year after, the year after that, the year after that, and you still have the funding for that person. Now, things can change, you know, uh. You know, you could have, you know, temperature segmentation, you could have a C I P that, you know, allows us to have a much greater levy, which, you know. But anyway, I guess there's, there's unknowns in the future. But if we look at the uh, what is being proposed by uh, the administrator. It allows the board to have the flexibility of making programming funding changes. Knowing that at least now, we have identified funding source for the next five years. Where if you take it out of the evidence, you only have funding for next year. And then next year, we're gonna be here going, how do we fund the fire person for following year? And they'll, and they will be having the same stuff. Now, I'm not saying we do or do not want to do the evidence room, I'm just saying that's a consideration.
So as things progress though, I mean, somewhere down the line, there will be some kind of consolidation. And with that plan, different communities have to put in, you know, their share of. The cost. We will probably be already up to that, if not more, because we have added full-time firefighter parameters to our departments. It will be up to some of the other communities to add to that, put their fair share in. Um, so that could be next year, that could be the year after. But for now, with all the extra calls we've had, we need help now. And again, one of the things that I feel the town knows this. We have two town representatives that come to every meeting, they discuss it with us, they go back and talk to their supervisors. And they know that this is something that's on the forefront. Nobody wants to pay more money, nobody, no, nobody, none of us, so they know this is coming. And we've been talking about adding to firefighter, uh, firefighter paramedic for years. So to not ask again, I guess it's, okay, so that doesn't mean there's no need for that. But if you're told time and time again, no, there's no money, there's no money, there's no money, at some point, maybe. You don't ask, but this is something that the town needs to share a cost in. And the money shouldn't come from the capital, the town needs to put in their portion for this and let's see what happens next year.
So I think you made a very good point, um, we don't know what's happening with consolidation. Uh, so I think that we, there's, it can go in one of the nu- number of different ways, depending on how the different communities in the county wish to work. Um, you know, I, again. I, I think it's such a gray area that, again, um. I, I hesitate, you know, pulling in from the police department uh, and funding a one-year and a one-year only. Funding source. Um, if we, if this is the direction that the village board wishes to go, which it's seems to have support. Then we should be looking at more than a one-year funding support for this person, because we don't want to be, the worst thing in the world is we don't want to. Be here next year and telling the chief that says. That's what the person go, because we did, now, we, because we did not identify a funding source that's sustainable.
So we've also been talking about revenue and so there's a huge revenue every year, it's larger and larger from the fire department. Um, you know, probably will hit a hundred thousand dollars by the end of this year. So that, I mean, that is not gonna go away, if anything, it's going to get higher and higher, so a portion of that can also go.
Right, I, I absolutely, I absolutely agree, but we don't know what, all I'm saying is today. We can evaluate, depending on revenue sources next year, how we want to fund in the future. I'm just saying, if we want to, if we want to commit. To this resource, we should commit to a, we, we should commit to a funding source that's more than a one-year approach. And if it, and if we have resource, if we have funding and revenues are all great, then next year, then we, then we can reevaluate how we. We fund that person in the future, but right now, I would have, I think it would be kind of tough for us as a group to say. We're gonna only fund an E M P guaranteed with one year's worth of tax level. And I, I just don't know how we can tell the chief, he said. Invest in this person, roll the training, get him up to speed, but you may not have him next year.
And, and, and I don't think we really know, as, as we kind of hear here, that, you know, changes in the wind. That, you know, we could be dealing with a much different environment next year, we could be dealing with the fact that maybe. Port Washington picks up more of their calls or um, uh, Softville picks up more of their calls. So we're not really guaranteed that our numbers are gonna hold, even at the level we are, they'll probably go up this year. But if we do have coordination between the departments and more assistance from those other departments. Whose communities aren't invested in as much as we are, those numbers could, could flatten out. So like I said, I, I'm for this, uh, fire department can fund it through their funds and uh. I think that's something that we should look at and, and give them the credit. Um, just a couple of last comments.
The contract with Softville, is that gonna be, is there gonna be an increase in dollar amount with that?
I think so, that's some feedback I've gotten, but I don't know until they adopt their budget and come to us with a proposal. I know Chief Rice has been in talks with their administrator, but I have not seen a draft.
So they propose to us that they want to pay us?
Uh, Chief Rice talks to them about what their contract should look like, depending on the amount of time that he is spending over there. Um, I have not seen a, and I understand that an increase may be warranted, but I have not even seen a forecast, much less a draft. Agreement to even speculate as to what that might be.
So Chief Rice, have you talked with Softville and put something in writing?
Yes, I have forwarded a plan, uh, I believe it's been included in the budget for two thousand five.
And there's an increase in their dollar amount?
Yes, there's, it would be around, around.
I'm sorry, how much?
Around eleven thousand, just.
Eleven thousand.
Is that part of the stipend chief for your oversight as well and the division chief, or excuse me, assistant chiefs? Inspection fees and part of administrative assistant um, dignitaries time? I guess, um, how much of that could be applicable? Um, in theory, um, assuming this comes to fruition, how much could that be applicable to a new uh, fire medic?
I believe, um, my, my calculations, this, two thousand twenty-one, the villages, or the fire department's bringing about fifty-two hundred dollars. Uh, in, with the recommendation for two thousand twenty-two, the fire department bringing about sixteen, uh, just over sixteen thousand. And that difference would be the increase of eleven, three, four, eight for two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand. The answer to that, so the revenue that's coming in.
Which, I assume, I have not been in contact with the Softville administrator on this and I do not, I do not have a draft contract. If we bring in that much revenue, how much is looking at the stipend for chief's oversight? The fire inspectors' inspection services, I know, Chief, you had mentioned to me in a staff level meeting about offsetting. Some of the administrative assistants' time, I guess what is left for the fire medic?
Okay, I think, again, we're kind of getting into the world of trying to build a budget on some, on a certain level of speculation. Which I think is gonna be kind of tough for us to explain to our taxpayers that, you know, our, our budget is made on. A lot of assumptions that we may or may not have, but we do know. We do know what we have allocated in a, in. For funding a person for the next five years, whether or not that's the permanent funding location, we know at this point. That we can go to our taxpayers and say, yes, we, we not, we not fund resources for one year and one year only. Um, final comments? So this is kind of what I'm hearing as a direction, and of course not, you know, there's a reason why you have a board. Not everybody's going to agree, but this is kind of the feedback that I'm hearing and, and I'll, and I'll just kind of look for nods. Uh, everybody's kind of in agreement that we are looking for another fire. Kind of, yes, everybody, I think that there's willing to. Uh, add to the park and rec, but compromise that maybe. Uh, add to the park and rec, but compromise at maybe that five, remember, that's kind of where I was hearing, there's some compromise.
I was just going up the sixty-five hundred that he had on here, but.
So, something. If you come up with five thousand, add to it, would that be something people, and then again, funding source. For the. Uh, evidence room, I think if you stay there, whether or not it gets done, is up for debate. And, and for discussion at public safety, and again, has to go off of the C M P project. And again, I, I think that the general support is for funding the fire medic. I don't, never heard that term before, but.
Uh, sorry, I mash them together, it's just easier to say, that's my.
What we can at least today say is a five-year program for funding out of the thinking of some funding out of the capital. And at least that sets us up for a position for future years to determine if that's most appropriate based on revenues. And other income sources. Is that kind of a consensus of a board?
I will not, um, go with taking it out of the capital.
So again, I'm, I'm kind of looking for a consensus stuff.
Well, and you didn't mention D P W.
Well, they, they do some refund.
Good for that. I'm not in favor of taking it out of capital.
Neither. Okay, so I guess then the question is, is how would you fund it next year? And for twenty twenty-three? Where would it come from?
We'll have to look at that next year.
But again.
But again, again, you know what, Jim? Um, we have revenue that has been proven with the calls. We have possible revenue coming in from Softville, if you want to recognize that that's fine. Um, but to take it from capital, no other department would want their capital taken later. And again, this is something that, this is a medical C D fire issue. It's. I'm just reminding you.
Maybe, maybe we should look at it as just a temporary grant from the capital fund until those sources. Those other sources and increases in revenue actually come in. And we see and can depend upon those going forward.
So, I would rather, and again, I don't know what's going to happen in a year. But we, we have not talked about the, the evidence room with health safety. It's not been talked about at finance. And it's, it's something that, to me, is, again, I don't know a lot about it, and I'm waiting to hear about it. I, I, please let me finish. Um, this is something that I think for right now, we can put aside maybe that for next year. Then maybe next year we go into capital. Maybe, and maybe there will be a whole lot of other, uh, changes coming forward with consolidation. I mean, nothing's a sure thing.
Well, and I think the other thing too is we, you know, might be able to look at, um, fourth quarter installation of a firefighter. We're not sure we're going to be able to fund it for next year.
And, and yeah, Lisa, nothing's a sure thing, but the increase of the need for the medical. Yeah, that's a sure thing. That is going to go up and up and up.
I have the information that, uh, Trusty Hartman asked for. Um, there are forty-six fully accredited agencies in the state of Wisconsin. There are three in Ozawa County, that one, Cedarburg, Fort Washington.
And I look forward to talking more about that.
Well, I mean, again, I. Do we, are we going to roll the dice? Or do we make some assumptions, or do we take it? With like a one, even if we do it one year, and review it for next year's budget. At least we have, at least we have a starting point.
If we get, uh, this will be the most prudent way we can move forward at this point. I would agree.
With the money coming out of capital?
At least for one year.
Okay, so, so again, I'm a no for that, so.
I mean, we're just like, again, this, this is, we're not ready anything strong, but what we're doing is to. Moving on, point is, we are able to easily go back to our residents and say. We have a funding plan to have fill and need at least for. You know, get that worth the next five years. And if it could be changed, it could be adjusted, but at least we can go down that road.
So the next year, we might be sitting here saying, maybe we should just take it up for one more year on the capital.
Oh, it depends on what revenues come back that, you know, off it. You know, everything is kind of whiteboarded every year.
But changing has started, they've been from March first and May first, since March first and then? Or July first?
Uh, with fifty-five versus, um. Right.
The fun, if we put that back a little bit.
Correct, July.
Yeah, and at least we agree that we need this person, and we're willing to fund it, but we're not going to pull as much out of. Capital as we would, if we put that back a lot.
Chief, they go last two, we got, or July first as well, correct?
Uh, they were, I think, March and, so they were pushed back.
What would July be? Good for you?
So then you're talking.
But you're still talking about the capital.
Yeah, now you're doing, I mean, talking, in fact, it's fifty-six, so you're down twenty-eight.
Yeah.
So I mean, now we're.
And the town doesn't pay any additional money. That's another issue that I have with it. Is they're not kicking in their amount for personnel, because we're choosing to take it out of the capital. They already contribute to.
The way it works for capital is they get billed for forty percent, currently under the current contract, forty percent of our actual expenditures, they don't contribute anything to the village to put aside. They're responsible for their own capital money. So what they put into it, they could put nothing into it every year, we don't know, we don't ask.
Yeah, and that is part of the contract, and.
They just need to have a, they need to have a minimum fund balance.
And in the contract, it says that somebody should really be keeping an eye on what they have in the fund balance for the town.
We give them our fund balance, they give us their fund balance, you know. And, and the calculation, um, regarding in, set forth in the I F C does note. The, uh, fire department, um, there, excuse me, the fiscal impact on the village budget, um, it does back out the town's share. Um, for a full year, so that, that sixty-five thousand dollar number. Uh, listed in attachment one, that is a full year of the village budget impact after the town cost share is applied. Um, so if you're looking at half a year, you'd be looking at about thirty-two, thirty-three village budget impact. Because the town cost share would be backed out. They, they do have to, i- if a fire medic is installed in the budget, the town does have to. Um, provide that cost share.
I mean, the drivers of.
Correct, it's, it's levy moved into the operating budget. Yep, yep.
Right, they put a certain amount towards operating costs, whether that's, um, used for personnel or for P C D equipment that he's going to use. It's all into one pack.
I'm not comfortable taking that.
I'm not either.
So even if we're down to. Twenty-five to thirty K, which you can evaluate next year. You, we're willing to go to our residents and say, we have no, we cannot guarantee a funding source beyond one year.
That's not fair to the chief.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's who we're telling the chief, we're saying, can't, we can't guarantee that you're going to have this person pass for a year.
So why did we get these options then, Jesse? That, um, you know, you gave us options.
That was directed.
Chosen, or some of us have, some of us have other ideas, and, you know, we still, I don't know if we just made a deal over there about the. Um, private open space, there's other options for that too, but this is an option, and.
It is. That's exactly right. Uh, I was directed to provide options, which I did. I did mention the pluses and or minuses. Um, associated with the individual options, but at the end of the day, a- as the village president pointed out, it is the board's budget. Um, I have an executive draft in front of you. Um, and I, I, it is my job to inform you of pluses and minuses regarding. Different, um, alternatives, uh, and it is also my job to provide a recommendation. By no means is it ever set in stone that my recommendation shall be approved. That, that is not how this works. Um, you, you tasked me with providing you with my best professional opinion. Um, I believe that's what I have done here, but that is not the end all be all.
And I think most of us would agree that, um, there is some need in public works. Um, the option for funding that is, um, I guess questionable for me. And, you know, and actually, another option is that that doesn't happen, and all that money goes. For the firefighters, but most of us don't want to see that. We don't want to have to go that route. To say, no, it's this or this, we would like to do both. So, I mean, obviously, we are not all financial people to be able to tell you, Jesse, where to get the money.
Correct, you, you asked for options, and I provided as many reasonable options as I could. Um, there are obviously unreasonable ones out there, and lay off from a different department to put another person in, in. Department B, it, it, I mean, there's obviously very unreasonable things out there, which I look to avoid completely. Um, I, I went through the fine-tooth comb and, and did what I could to provide, um, alternatives to consider. And that, you're exactly right, Trusty Hartman, there are alternatives that achieve both the public works crew person and the fire medic. Um, there are, um, recommendations that speak to specifically an allocation and only an allocation into. The parks and open space fund. Um, I, I explained my, my professional opinion on that, however. Uh, there are alternatives out there specifically to that park and open space fund. Um, so I appreciate any guidance. Um, here this evening, so that Paul and I may finish up a budget book and have it ready to go for you guys for adoption.
As one action, could the new, fire department staff members start in July?
Yep. So then we would be looking at approximately, uh, starting in July, we would be looking at approximately, let's say, thirty-two thousand dollars instead of sixty-five.
That would be our sure.
Correct, yes.
And I think what I can do is, is if we are increasing the number of ambulance calls every now. There might be some funding coming from that, that might be able to fund less of a full power of the capital improvement. Am I incorrect in that?
That is true, any revenue realized by the, um, fire department above and beyond what E B X forecasted for us. Would offset any need from either the fire department capital fund or the fund balance as programmed.
And I guess that's what I think is important to say here, is that, you know, we have this need, and it's going to be fulfilled. By additional, um, ambulance calls, and that we're going to be getting additional, um, revenues from that. But yet, we don't really want to commit that, commit to that. Because we're not really sure if it's going to take place. Yet, if we do generate that type of revenue with those calls that your folks are going to make, Bill, that will offset. The need to tap the capital, capital fund. So, to me, I, I, I just don't see how we can argue with both ways. When we don't have funds, or we do have the funds. It looks like we have the ability to raise them, and that's been my point all along. You know, the two thousand calls per year is kind of just a shot in the dark. It's our best estimate. On the budget of what we think is going to happen. But I think in this room, nobody believes that number. Chief, I don't think you believe that number, two thousand, I think you're going to probably achieve twenty-two to twenty-three hundred calls this year.
It's very difficult, these are crazy times starting businesses right now.
I know how complex this is and how complicated it is, but this is what we deal with in budgets. Our best estimate of what we think is going to happen this coming year. Who would have thought we would have COVID? And Bill, question for you, was COVID crazy or slow? Oh, exactly. And that's what we're going to have in this coming year, crazy and slow. And we can't have everything in black and white. Sometimes we have to take a little bit of, uh, we have to take a little bit of a risk to be able to say we're going to have more calls than we can here. And of course, if you don't have those calls, Bill, I don't think you're going to be paying your part timers either, or.
It's a mix, but there is some, uh, accuracy.
Sure, so that, the, you know, the three F T U's that we kind of have in there with part timers, that those numbers will go down if we don't have it. So I think that we've all got to look at this and be willing to compromise a little bit. You know, I think we're, we're, we're willing to look at compromising on, on what we can do to get that funding for Chief Race.
A six-month start, as was recommended, cuts the sixty-five thousand and a half, so the third, the villages cost. You're thirty-two five. He added, he, he expected eleven thousand from Softville. Which has not been approved, but is expected in revenue, brings down for July one start, twenty-one thousand. For a full-time firefighter.
So my question to you, Bill, are you comfortable with the twenty-one thousand dollars? That might have to come out of your capital, capital plan to fund that person, that's going to make your life easier.
Under a wor- worst-case scenario for next year, yeah, but I have had no time to analyze a long-term. Year after year, no time to analyze that at all.
Fully understand.
Hasn't even been twenty-four hours since I saw that.
I don't think any department head, department head here is really good at predicting the future.
Twenty-one, that's, that could, worst-case scenario, we could possibly do that, that could be a.
There you go, and that's a reasonable, not an ongoing basis, that's a reasonable answer, Bill.
Okay, so, um, so again. We, to compromise, we look at a July one, and that gives us a six months to look at revenues. Uh, and, you know, we have a statement that says, that it's sustainable for, you know, one year, even though we have a five-year C I P. Um, you know, we change it every year. Are, are we good with that much?
What do you mean, it's sustainable for six months?
No, I mean, I mean, we have a five-year C I P that says we could fund this person. With existing balance, but we also are saying that if we wait until July one. And we look at potential revi- additional revenues. In the first part of the year, it could have a much less impact on any kind of capital commitment. And then at this point, at this point, next year, we can determine, is this still a direction we want to go, or is. We want to look at other capital projects that may be put on water plate, or, or, you know, for all we know. You know, the economic conditions can, and will change next year, so we'll have to have this discussion about it. They always do.
They always do?
Not for me, sorry, not for me.
So, it addresses, it addresses the conservative, I, I believe, of having that capital fund. It's, we brought it way down, and we can reevaluate it and look at it next year. And even before that, to see if, you know, if it's really needed.
Well, it's going to be needed. I mean, we, you know, we know that. And we've been talking about this, you know, since twenty seventeen, we're talking about. What we need and the difficulty that the chief is having with getting volunteers paid on call, volunteers, you know, call them what will. Um, that's getting less and less, and I'm afraid that the people that are left there are, are, are just going to drop off. I mean, they may not, because we like the departments. But to, you know, I know this is special revenue fund, and. This is an area that we should have had more money in there this year related to taxes. We talked about that last year. We should be looking at increasing that line item for next year. We didn't even talk about that. We didn't even talk about putting that line item up related to taxes for this year, for next year. Because that could have funded some of this.
I'm looking at the proposed allocation and fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, with the code, uh, you are still looking at almost a million dollars in fund balance.
Capital.
So that's what I see here.
The, the second attachment to the I F C?
Well, this is not, this is not. This is a well-funded balance, this is a million dollars. I mean, we're talking maybe thirty thousand. It's like one-third of, maybe two percent of the back of the whole. Of the whole fund balance? maybe two percent of the back of the whole, of the whole fund balance in 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 the, the savings. You know, a million, a million dollar fund balance was debating a couple thousand dollars. And and Chief has wanted to work with that, from what I see.
I'm saying for next year, but I've seen this idea. I read my email last night and found all this data last night. Didn't read through the weekend. So I located last night. It hasn't been twenty four hours, and the key link had radically changed on an ongoing basis.
The chief, we're all dealing, we're all dealing with this last minute, right? Because this was not brought forward through the budget process. So we're, we're trying to address how to get a needed resource for the department and still be able to balance that with all the other needs that are going on. Everybody here is totally sympathetic to what you're trying to accomplish, and everybody is very, I think everybody is very proud of what we do. Now we just have to figure out how to make it happen.
And we have a plan right now in front of us, maybe not perfect, to fund it for next year, for twenty twenty two. And by the time you get into July of next year, when the person's hired, we're going to be starting the budget again. That will be our time to be able to look at how to fund it for twenty twenty three and beyond.
So I mean, we're looking at somewhere between two, two and a half percent of a total fund balance to get the chief started. Does any, does anybody have any concerns with that?
So, again, I just want to say, yes, we are, we are allowing public works to have somebody with one portion of that FTE using salt savings. I mean, that is not a sustainable thing, and the money is going forward from the tax levy to pay for that person. So it's, and I know they're two different things, but that is not sustainable. Salt savings to pay for another employee.
It's not just salt things, right?
We brought in other things.
Brought up revenues that we brought in, permit fees that we expect to continue. We brought up the fact that this person will lower our consulting engineering fees that we are using for inspection in the summer will help offset those costs with a lot of other things other than salt. And I didn't even.
Every year, you're asking for this person.
Five, five in here.
Sure, five years.
All right. I am asking one last time, is the board okay with maybe two, two point something percent of a million dollar fund balance to be used to fund the chief's a new fire medic, whatever that term is for twenty twenty two?
From the capital?
From, yes, two percent, talking
A thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars. But at least we can go to our residents and say we have, we have a, a funding source that is available. You know, I mean, I get it, for next year, and we can always, we can always adjust it. I just want this to move forward. I struggle with it. I mean, I, 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 and I think, you know, with compromise and with sort of compromise, we can find another five thousand. I'd say for, for Park and Rec, I would say, you know, try and find it, but I would say we wouldn't spend it until there's identified projects. Right? You wouldn't want to put it in just in that exception, right?
Correct. And Amy and I will sit down with the director and along with the major of the board and try and identify what those projects are.
Will they get that for twenty twenty two?
I mean, they might.
That's what I mean. I mean, that's what you would ask for.
Yeah, yeah.
So then that would have to come from somewhere.
But you just said we might, I mean, it might and we will.
Well, again, there's already a fund balance there.
There is. There's going to be a ninety thousand dollar fund balance January one.
It's just that thirty thousand.
Excuse me, ninety thousand available.
They won't get any more than the thirty five thousand.
Yeah, I thought thirty five, which is going to get up to at least forty, forty five. That was what we talked about early on here.
It's thirty five now, right?
It is thirty five right now.
Talk about a compromise, you got a five, you have four.
Ten.
And then you'd be adding that on top of the ninety.
Yeah, can I just ask one question? I'm trying to understand the the compromise that you're presenting. Because right now, the recommendation isn't just do this for one year, it's to do it for the next five years. And if you look at the end of the five years, the best fund balances in the million is seventy five thousand, which is depleting, is basically depleted the fund. So my question is, is what you're presenting, Jim, that for next year, that's all we do, but we don't take the rest of the recommendation for now, which is for the next four years after twenty twenty two, we continue to do that, and that's our funding source?
I I'm just saying next year, we would reevaluate it all over again. All I'm saying is, with this approach, we can go to our residents and say, yeah, we can, we can commit to a fire person. I'm going to call it paramedic. We can commit to that at least for the next five years. We have a funding source. Whether or not you can use it or whether or not revenues change or not, but at least we don't have to go to the chief and say, we may, we can get you one for next year, but we can't guarantee you'll have it for the year after that.
So so you would then be continuing to say, if push comes to shove, we use the capital fund for that equipment?
It's up to the board, really is, on how they want to fund it. You know, it's a priority for the board and the community, then figure out a way to fund it.
Because I think a one year commitment to do that is a lot different than a five year. A five year does, it wreaks havoc with the fund. A one year doesn't. I agree with you on that. So you'd have to make sure that whatever you do today isn't a commitment. If you can't find it anywhere else, that's where it comes from. It's instead, it's everything's fair game.
I think it's important to note, we adopt an annual budget. It is for one year and one year only. That and the scenario in the attachment there just simply proves that it technically could cash flow in the positive. By utilizing those funds year over year from the Fire Department Capital Equipment Fund under the Village President's point and to my point of being an annual budget, this would have to be discussed next year, whether or not you want to continue to come from that fire department capital, whether it should be some other source, whether revenue, calls for service revenues cover it. That that will all be up for discussion on next year. Because again, it is an annual budget. Yep.
So it's no different than the information we have from this year and the revenue we've made from this year. So, yes, if people want to take it from the capital, go ahead and take it. I'm not taking it from the capital. It's a slippery slope.
We're looking at compromise to, I mean, again, not everybody, you know, can walk away with a hundred percent. We have something that's provable. I mean, I I guess, yes, you'll stay with that? Okay, then there's your direction. Any other public input? All right, that being said, we'll have to move this portion of the public area and move right into the regular order business. And six is looking to improve the rest of the ten eighty three years, the whole of ten eighty three years, or ten twenty five committees, the whole, and the file, the twelve sixteen, the fire commission, the two sixteen, the fire commission, the nine eight, architectural review board, nine twenty eight, five years, you need to testify. Next, the second, I have special occasions on the minutes.
Yes, I do. Uh, Mr. President, on, on the minutes from the board meeting, there was a request that the Trump team polled for interest in finding funding for the permanent firefighter position. The consensus was established before I had a chance to vote, and so I would like the minutes to reflect that.
More questions, qualifications? Here, none, all favor. Move on item seven. Anybody in the audience that agrees?
Wish you've heard of an unattend item?
I do. Um, so I I got a letter from the director of our E and D program, and I wanted to read this.
What, what do you mean?
Emergency medical disaster.
Oh, E and D.
E and D, I'm sorry. Um, so this is from the medical director, Dr. Stephen Zos, who is the other hospital, no, medical director in the emergency department of Grafton. Chief Rice, I wanted to share my sincere feelings for your department and the excellent staff you had on Thursday night. I'm sure you heard about this call already, but we had a gentleman with a very serious brain bleed. He needed to be transferred emergently to St. Luke's for possible emergency brain surgery. Unfortunately, because of the weather, flight for life was not flying. In addition, all the private ambulance services we usually use were busy, and there was a two hour wait until they could get a unit to our hospital. Our ER staff called the Grafton Fire Department to see if there was any way they could help us and more importantly, this patient to receive the emergent care if he needed. Your staff rose to the challenge and worked outside the box to ensure the patient was placed first. I can't tell you how proud I am of the crew's can-do attitude and the professionalism they displayed. I've always been proud to work with the Grafton Fire Department, and Thursday night was a shining example of why. Take here Steve Zels.
Thank you, Aika.
Yeah, and I would like people to think about that when they're thinking about the budget.
All right, anything else on non-attend item? Yeah, let's move forward. Any items have been presented in the role? Actually, let's move on item nine, resolution is on this action items. We have this one item. And that's an ordinance recommending, recommending approval on a particular zone, twenty one eighty five, passing avenue from self-commercial mixed units to PUD planned unit development approved. And that's the same, previously known as, as near the most spot.
Correct.
I'm in for a second.
Second, motion to second, all in favor?
Right.
I would hope that. All right, let's move on to department and officers' reports.
Absolutely. We have initial feedback that there may be some change to the ARPA legislation pending. The initial feedback is that the ARPA program may be revised to include roads. As it sits right now, any road reconstruction would require utility work to accompany that. Obviously, we're going to track this pretty closely because that that could impact our decision-making process here in Grafton. But that is some pretty, pretty favorable feedback we we've come across as far as just trying to monitor federal legislation on that. The downside, that may also be an indicator that the infrastructure bill at the federal level may be getting changed significantly and not necessarily be as beneficial as initially thought. So two things that staff is keeping an eye on, on behalf of you policymakers, but just trying to stick with the good news there that ARPA may include roads. We'll see if that actually does get revised. We did get initial feedback regarding the examination of the Police Department Foundation on cracks. As recall, we we obtained quotes to have an engineer take a look at it. We are waiting on the final report. But the initial feedback we got is it appears to be simply settling and not significant structural issues. Fingers crossed. We are waiting on that final report, but that that initial indication is pretty good news as as we know, structural repairs can get expensive pretty quickly. So that that would be excellent thing for us if in fact it is simply just a repair of a settling issue. I'm happy also to report on behalf of the Community Development Department that we do have a plan reviewer on board and starting to review plans for us, commercial development plans, helping take the edge off of building Inspector Meek's responsibilities. And so that that is a great news of for that department and the village as we move forward. Those are the three quick updates that I have this evening.
Uh, update, Jesse, Mark and Rick Director?
Uh, we have three interviews scheduled throughout the day tomorrow, including facility tours. And so we are hoping to have a preferred candidate to potentially extend an offer to at the end of the day tomorrow. So pretty excited about that.
I want to commend you on getting the rec staff involved in the site tours, because that was really a good, a good move on your part.
Thank you.
They can kind of, you know, give you a little bit of a sense from their perspective on all that individual labor.
Thank you.
Um, Jessica, uh, I was on a plan commission, and I saw that there was an update on the lifestyle service. So they are then no longer functioning until they update?
No, they have the, the commission is permitted by their votes.
Okay, so.
They are no longer, they have been notified into vacates in fourteen missing, or ten missing days. They can always qualify for that location or another location in the village, and we have a new commission.
Okay. And then my other question is, Jesse, I saw somewhere that there was, maybe you had said it in a social media post. Do you have a preference or gets to decide who our newspaper choice is for? I know in the past we've used news graphic.
And that still is the case. That's actually established through the clerk's office, and I believe it's a publication ability to publish, it's readily published. I think it's, it may maybe codified. Frankly, I'd have to check that, but I do know the news graphic is our official village newspaper.
I'm just curious because the, the OZACU Press, you know, there's a whole section on Grafton, there's not a lot of news technically from the news graphic, so I thought it would be good.
I would like us to look into that as well.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
Sure.
They don't do anything for graphic.
And there's more circulation.
Yep.
There's more circulation than there is with the OZACU Press.
I I can check in with the clerk's office on it. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Another question for you, Jessica. Can you tell me, in your experience, when the last time we had a additional use, we revoked before?
We've not had a revocation since I've been here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with when the last time the village revoked my commission.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll pull that.
This was, this was a case of, you know, severe violations of fire laws. I think in any other, the other unfortunate thing, not to break the point, but the other unfortunate thing is that the business owner did not make any attempt to address the situation, and clearly staff and the plant commission would have worked with them if there had been any hint of attachment.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember a revocation.
And we actually gave him a month to create. We paid him a month.
And they had gone with another, like, security funds or something?
Yeah, I mean, there's never a problem with, well, there are any.
All right, there are no licenses, let's move on to bills. And if you're moving for a pool of expenditures, two hundred and seventy six thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars and twenty nine cents, I'll make a motion. Second, I saw the back and forth on bills. Any questions?
Yeah. Okay, Jessica, I, or maybe Mike, I don't know, this fee that we paid linebacker. I mean, what, what, is that a legal term?
Uh, that's, that's actually a term in our insurance policy. It's, think of it as, as almost like a football analogy. It's like a backup to the village's liability policy. And that linebacker claim was the deductible for the mine and key lawsuit claim.
I I saw that.
Yep.
I thought linebacker was a strange term to use.
Yeah, it's simply from the insurance company. That's the term they use for it.
Kind of hard to, oh, wonder, wonder what that is, texting like linebacker and, and legally, it didn't seem to match.
Sure. No, it was a very good question asked and was happy to provide that feedback. And I'm not sure where it comes from as far as why the insurance company labels it that way, but it's covered by what they refer to as a linebacker policy. There we go.
Yeah, I I have a question. The MSA building for sixteen through sixty, nothing about the amount, but how it was coded. And I I read your answer. And I'm not sure I understand or think that was the right answer, because this is a, this has to do with the waste water plan.
Yeah, at the end of the year, at the end of the year, we'll work with, I'm assuming it's going to be Breckin now, it's to be Larry, to go through all the invoices and to make sure they're applied to some, so yes, majority of time we do post them to work construction in progress. Once in a while, something slips through. That's why we do a reconciliation at the end of the year to make sure. And if it's in the wrong code now, we'll make sure it goes to the, the right code for audit. So that will be moved to probably construction in progress.
It, it, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure how she came up with advanced treatment.
Yeah, I don't know. We met with her last week and went over, we, we, uh, before just to make sure, but yeah.
It's not finished by year end.
Yep. Correct. We prefer, in the accounting world, we prefer the projects to go to CIP for that, for the watering sewer fund. It just makes our life easier. for that, for the watering sewer fund and just make our life easier.
And this for I don't know, I knew that motion came from you.
Yeah.
I have a follow up with like, you're number one elimination, me or?
I bet you that's easy. All right, motion second on favor.
All right.
And motion passes. Item thirteen, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On favor.
All right.